All right, well, it is seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call our regular meeting, brought up fourteen point twenty-one to the board, and turn it over to Commissioner Headman to listen in.
Well, thank you for having all of the members here today that we have the opportunity to serve this town. I thank you for our help, trust, and for the desire that you will be certain. I just ask that that spirit continue to add that to Jesus being in that.
Amen. All right, so next up is the approval of the agenda. We do need to amend the agenda to add this resolution here, this is the Resolution of Nowating and Approving Corrections to Ordinance Amendment to the Zone Map of the Town of Youngsville. We're gonna place that under item B, under New Business. So, having said that, do I hear a motion to approve and amend the agenda?
Motion for approval.
Second. All right, we've got first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have the Public Hearing Section, which is A, amendment to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, section eight dot four dash one E, to change the minimum front street setback for the Ag, yeah, Ag District from one hundred and twenty feet to thirty feet. The action requested here is to continue this hearing to the November twenty twenty-one Board of Meetings. Do I hear a motion to continue the hearing to the November?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Have we discussed this before?
No, you mean that not, not the, the setback?
Yes.
No, sir.
It would be a new idea.
It would be a new idea, yes, sir.
Okay, motion for approval.
Yeah.
Action.
Very good. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Moving that to November twenty twenty-one. Next up on the agenda is Citizens' Comments.
No, three minutes, you gotta be right.
That's New Business.
Okay, got it, following up.
Next up is Citizens' Comments. Do we have anyone in the Senate who would like to make a citizen's comment? Do we have anybody on the phone?
As far as the citizens' comments are not available this month, they would be your next one.
Okay, sounds good. We'll move along to the Consent Agenda. The action requested here is to approve the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Motion for approval.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. There's no old business to discuss. Item A, under New Business, is the Amendment to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, section eight dot four dash one E, to change the minimum front street setback for the Ag District from one hundred and twenty feet to thirty feet. The action requested here is going to be similar to the Public Hearing, is that is to continue to the November twenty twenty-one Board of Meetings.
I actually took the same.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion carries. Fourth and other business, the, the, that's why I got you, they were just first of things, just to keep me honest. Okay, so item B is the Resolution of Nowating and Approving Corrections to Ordinance Amendment to the Zone Map of Youngsville. Basically, there was a slight text error on the very back page that needs to be corrected, and that's what we will be doing by April. Emily, excuse me, Madam Firth, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I believe our audience would have a few questions. Yes, I just talked to this, and then the item, it's just a terrible error that is important towards this topic, especially in August. We wanted to make sure that the corrections we had made into the record and is the rest of that practice best for the government in time to get corrections for this current setting map. So, that's why it's important to you, just in case you were wondering, we have to do this kind of thing frequently. But I appreciate your consideration and having to give that.
Any questions, commentants, concerns from the commissioners, Mr. Barbara Donk? All right, so I'm assuming here the action requested is going to be to approve a resolution?
No, Jeff, no, Jeff, no.
First, by Commissioner Brin, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, I can get into the fourth and other business, and I'll look first. Fall Festival is outstanding, so congratulations, Commissioner Headman, and to the one that is probably the, the most highly attended one that I have ever seen, Fall Show is phenomenal. Looking forward to the, the treaty that we have here. I'm not looking forward to some of the complaints about traffic, what we can do with that for the kids, kind of people that are in a hurry to get somewhere. And then we've got Trick or Treat Trail at Buden after that, so we've got some pretty cool stuff coming up towards the end this month. Do want to give a shout out to Officer Robinson Steinbrenner for trying to help out, and with the very mild emergencies involving the community house that's leaking water. They were, they were very helpful, and they ended up checking in on the folks after I left, so, kudos to those guys. Tom, think about that, anything else? I'll leave it. So, I will yield the rest of my time and turn it over to the space.
This is fair. I've had, I haven't brought to my attention recently where the trash truck, they run over it, small piece of, I'm thinking, material within the right of way, and I wanted to get some direction from the commission on where it wasn't a negative act. I'm not worried about this, it's probably a twenty-five dollar violation. The issue is when a resident puts something in the right of way, they're putting it on public property, they're putting it on your land, and so, we don't really want that to occur without our permission, and then certainly don't want somebody else to put something in the public right of way that we even have to pay for when we drive cars on the right of way, which is a whole piece of the right of way. So, before I just, even though it's a, a small amount of twenty-five dollar amount, they just might just set a precedent for what happens in the future when other people do this. And the most expensive example I can think of, maybe somebody putting up a very decadent stone fence that picks a ditch and put something like a wall here, and you were, you know, significant money depending on how expensive people were cracked or, and if they want not. But I think it is a good idea for us to have formal policy if there's one way or the other to make more evidence. But what is definitely true is that we don't have the authority over the U.S. Post Office. They just put their mailbox where their mailbox can go, and what most municipalities do is if a mailbox is knocked over by a trailer removal or fricking or some other town vehicle, they replace the mailbox with something to be property or to reassemble.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd agree with you that, you know, we can't sit and touch them in those papers, kind of paper, anything that's in our right of way that shouldn't be there in general. I know we've had it in, you know, in our neighborhood where it's some basic stuff that see people from turning up the yard and looking terrible, but we also know that, hey, you know, it just gets torn out, it's not on my hands. I, I agree with you on the approach.
I agree with what you're saying. They just, we know, it's been bothering me, and we probably can't do anything without the, the, some of the, some of the, they just, they just, I don't know how to best describe it, they don't get mailbox, but they've got like a parking contract, it's kind of like actually.
Several laws now require for central box unit, even for a single tenant, to have it, with that one station, and require that the, the regulations around those things are admitted.
Oh, I know.
But absolutely, you're, you're, you're right. It no longer look like the neighborhood that we grew up in. It ultimately, I guess, saves money in terms of distribution for the post office, but if it's been time, it just makes lots of new boards.
I don't know if anything can be done, just in my opinion, well, for the residents, if they've not gone down to the central, you know, maybe they could walk through the power, but.
We did try, um, we did, we tried for subdivisions that has already been started, be it they continue to do mailbox, or the only new subdivision has a key off, because it's, it's even blend, that's one last phase, it's the only phase that has key off, the residents have it, but we've tried a couple of times to see if we can at least keep the subdivision consistent.
It's just about history, Father, and I have, I have to say.
I actually prefer it. We have it in our neighborhood, I don't have to maintain a mailbox, I don't have to worry about somebody knocking it over, I don't have to, you know, worry about neighbors not painting it and it looking terrible like it was in our old neighborhood. It's not that far from my house, I could see it being painted.
Well, there's a complete difference from what the rest of the neighborhood had it for, I don't know, and I wouldn't have it in our house.
Yeah, so what we could initiate is a permit, we could have a durability here, we could initiate a key, you know, with our, our update, and when we use a bunch of, like, you know, nine months now, so we can see how many entries we're gonna have, and then insert the plus or minus or anything. And that way, we could catch the weird stuff of what I was thinking of, where somebody has a reasonable use within the right of way, with it. Most of us would say, ah, that's not permitted in the right of way.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess we just have to be pretty clear about what's permitted and what's not permitted, right?
I think eventually we would get that direction, but the answer right now would be nothing is permitted except for public interest.
Well, I pretty well thought that was basically what it was to start with.
I think where you're going with that is there's some, some problems in housing, obviously, just towns to clean up in the way that it's served, is that kind of where you're going with that?
Yeah, well, there were real regulations about it in that, and so, we did have one resident, like I said, they, they ran over, I was here, there's a brown metal etching around some land that maybe four tires were applied, and we did have a trash cart run over that, but it's within, you know, six inches of the edge of the asphalt, so that trash cart very quickly had all of its weight still on the road, and just to have a part of tire roll over it. But, yes, there are, according to current guidelines, as to that, and I point two directions for the all four hours, moving away.
We almost stopped pictures for having it out there.
I mean, it's very much consensus just to have them go ahead and sort of look at it and update it as needed. Yeah, that's very clear.
The, uh, other things that I have is obviously a lot of the department heads are here today. Some of them are existing, some of them are fixed, and then some of them are out of town. They should all be back again next month, but on that note, I will be working for Zone Smart, I have the auditing standards for the, um, art funds from the federal government, and, um, which I'll understand, and I don't want to hear the jack standing behind my radio with the pushback, we've got to try to figure out if the federal can use that. So, I'll talk to the operator for Zone Smart. Still, Bill, is that current email for you?
All right.
Does anyone need to know anything before we?
Thanks, we need to set the date for the different award we did. The November, I mean, fall of holiday.
November.
And we can put the second, and it's like, um, staff would be less likely to attend.
Are we looking at trying to do it the week before, the week after?
Either.
And it does not have to be on a Thursday, it's a Monday or a Tuesday or something else looks better?
I'll leave that up to the commissioners. What you got, I mean, are y'all available on one day as opposed to the other?
I'm gone first, thinking of them, but don't go with that for me.
Because then the following week would be pushing for Thanksgiving.
You mean, you're on the number five, you said?
Would, would the ninth?
I, no, I won't.
Oh, you would be gone, okay.
I'll go.
I'd like to go with the first we can do that.
Well, starting with eight, nine, and ten, I'm going by the, how best they will.
So, you'd be available for?
Yes.
I'm also around the home square.
Um, that is, that gives a little bit of concern that we need to have it after the planning board, because the reason that we could call it, item, because the planning board is on a corner, it's unable to let it on, uh, but we also need to have it pass through the planning board on the first.
Do you have a date in mind that's gonna work best, Brett?
I didn't think about that until just now, the planning board, um.
If they were going to send it, they could have it. Would that give them enough time to get all the paperwork in and ask Tom to take it care of?
Um, so the end of fact will go out before the planning board, but on Wednesday morning, I can send out additional information with planning board results, and then we will have the information we need for, um, action either, whether it's day or night, on Thursday.
Well, the fourth is on Wally, and I gotta take that.
I totally understand.
I mean, totally understand. Whatever the, kind of holiday, festival, I know that is, oh, well, yeah, I've got to take that on.
Well, probably six. Where was that, one day?
I'm saying Terry is gonna be on.
One day, you missed it. Tell me, I don't know, six. Uh, I don't know, I tried to.
Commissioner Headman would be.
I'll be able to drive home that day, but I'd rather than not, after, because we made that nice process. The week before, I love it.
And it's the eighteenth? Too far out?
The week before, it's still.
I mean, I think I'd be fine with the eighteenth. That would mean that would be the week after the regular scheduled meeting, right?
The week after the regular scheduled meeting, and December meeting looks like it could be September ninth, so that's pretty much what you're.
Is that reasonable for everyone, the eighteenth? Works for me, Firth.
I don't remember.
All right. Okay, um, so, set the date for November meeting as being eighteenth, um, I'm assuming you want that in a motion form?
Yes, please. November eighth, please, seven o'clock, and hopefully twelve.
Well, hopefully we'll be meeting at a different location.
Oh, yeah, we, we want to read that, the date and location.
Okay. Will it be ready for us to move in by eighteen?
If we have to have it by October, we'll be there.
We'll figure, we still got a conference room, so we can get it figured out, okay. So, set the date for the November, uh, meeting for the eighteenth, seven P M. at Town Hall. And hopefully that'll be our first official meeting in our new business, so, um, can I, I'll entertain a motion to set the date for November eighteenth, seven P M. at Town Hall. All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? The date is set. Anything else, Mr. Stages?
One of the things, the stuff was at our December, and we really got a lookout for the dates the past year, and we got all of those. I'm on a schedule, so I'll have to wait until the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Brin?
A couple things, um, we had the joint NPO meeting, I forget the date, a couple weeks ago, with Campo and Durham Chapel Hill Carver, uh, NPO, and one of the main things that that came out of that was some momentum towards focusing our efforts, you know, for transportation around multimodal modes of transportation, not just focusing on automobiles. A lot of the people who commented said, you know, if we keep building cars, that's all we'll get in the future, and, you know, this is, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, um, you know, it's still, it's still kind of hard for me to think of not owning a car at some point, and that's what, there's getting at a lot of the younger folks these days, and, you know, I'm sure it's different for youngs than it is if you're in downtown Wally, so, I just try to think about not having a car or even two cars, and, you know, a lot of that needs to have more infrastructure for, you know, railways, bus, and pedestrian and bike, so, there was a, a real momentum shift in both groups, at least conceptually, about changing the way we do that. And, um, next week, we have two Campo meetings, the regular scheduled Campo meeting on the visit meeting on Wednesday, and the annual strategic retreat next Friday. They're trying to decide if they're gonna have it in person, or it's gonna have a birthday off in a way, but if they do it in person, I'm trying to, for the majority of them, so I'm looking forward to that. Aaron's not on the call, I don't believe, but the last call for, or the call for projects for last projects are due October twenty-ninth, I know, she says she's on track to submit the Luddy Park Trails, uh, for that situation, do you have anything else on that next?
No, I think that was the only one that was listed, I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, I scared it, because I asked on September twenty-ninth, was it committed, and I had the month on, so, um, YABA had its annual meeting, I mean, annual, uh, member appreciation night last Thursday, I couldn't attend, I know Lisa Nathan went, I don't know if anybody else went, but, uh, from the pictures, it looks like it was a good event, and now that things are opening up, we'll have more Nike Network events, and I'll be sure to share those if you're gonna can, so hopefully you can get out and, um, meet some of the businesses in town. That's all I got.
One thing that's really interesting, kind of, is it was actually natural, they think our agreement was about the three million dollars, the rolling, putting some young people back up through the house, I don't have, it's just, going in seven, or the.
You know, I need to, I need to settle with him, too, because I think he was, he said in like the timeframe of two weeks without approval, and I don't know that that happened, I don't think he saved the pass or bust it, so, I think, I think he settled them and tried to get it. Yeah. No, no, I'm. All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, you know, only thing I've got is, yeah, I've spent, I've spent a bunch of time in Florida the last, I don't know, four months, I was in West Palm Beach, and all the side streets they have have the trade bump on, for speeding. I don't know if that's gonna be a possibility for us, I mean, we're talking about a minute of time on some of these side streets, especially like Winston and probably Cross, I don't even need to look at something like that. And what I mean trade is it's a, it's a gradual bump, if you hit it going full speed like most people will, it's gonna be an issue for the car, but the, you know, the, the speed, uh, indicator you're on a street, that, you know, it's fine, but you still have to go down that line. And it's, I, I mean, I'm, it's not the only street that has a problem, so, that was in that, so, I was trying to get to a job, I was like, what if I died, and, uh, somebody came by me going about fifty, so, it's still a problem on these side streets, especially during the busy time, and nobody wants to hit the light, so, but we've got to come up with some kind of solution to that. And on that, to say for me, I had a neighbor come to my house, that was the first time in fourteen years I've been a commissioner, somebody come to my house, that's about the big problem, so.
It's, it's an issue that's a little different, too, with all the contractors coming through, and the new folks that, they're, they're highballing that, not only just passing out stories, not everybody, but I just yell, but I don't throw rocks, but.
I'll sort of yell, I would, I'd only.
So, there's a couple things that we can do, one, we can look through and make sure that the street passing are building the way that they're, we're building gave it the roads rather than keep the dirt there, right? If somebody can't drive fifty on the street and not running with a telephone pole, we're probably got too much of the street there. The other thing, we can look at the speed bumps, they add a maintenance requirement, and smaller ones that are, that forward with all their lines going, doesn't have to worry about it in the future, but, one of the things I've talked about with Mayor Flowers and Pete Whitley is the college K, and we can, um, deploy some of our road vehicles out on Winston to form this chain, and see what happens out there, so what it does is, narrow the travel lane for traffic coming in both directions, so that they have to go less slowly, right? And if it works with the speed vehicles out there, then we can transition and do something with a, you know, a small curbing or whatever, that, um, would ultimately be very effective for us to maintain the water, but also also have a same output, um, without, you know, impacting emergency as long as.
Well, it's funny, because the street we stayed on had it, had the speed bumps, and there was the animals that go across, and that's what we always heard, the EMS, they never slowed up, so.
Well, I didn't have anything, my real comment, Commissioner Johnson, a resident at the intersection of Winston and Cross Street, and we came to her about a week ago and said that, uh, she had a narrowing hitch from the speeder at that intersection, she didn't even stop to stop down. Cross and Winston, that intersection. And of course, on that side street, I hear comments from my son every morning.
All right, Commissioner Reeves, anything else?
No.
All right, Commissioner Headman?
Uh, just a couple things, and Fall Festival, I'm here, but, yes, it's really, when you can rest, like, versus, you know, it's organized, it's hard to show, it's, it's a, 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 that's kind of my last, although I promise I'm still a lot of people here in there. Um, one other thing, and I'm just curious, is that lower doesn't work up, Luddy Park, is that gonna be done simply for any idea? Reason I ask, I, I walk down that way, it's pretty slick, it's mud, etc., I'm sure there's other, I'm just curious, I mean, it looks like an asset project.
It is an asset project, and the hope is that it'll allow us to use all three fields in both questions, um, right now, that's the bottom field there, question, this word is not. E are hopeful that it'll be done for Trick or Treat Trail, but it depends on how much time it takes, that's a very, if we're not ready for it by Trick or Treat Trail, we have it up front, it's planned in place, to change that layout a little bit for that three to five, but it is, we're hopeful it'll be done before time.
Okay. And just, just one other thing, um, to Aaron, the, the stop sign is at the bottom of the hill, sometimes people go through that left and right, rather than bend on right, just that far. And getting this, to rid of trouble with places. Not even Halloween stop.
Well, there's a question about the Luddy Park project, in that portion where the backside of the, uh, the walkway goes into the back parking lot off the home, are we doing anything about that area that we put the big rock in before, because that's already chewed up already, you know what I'm talking about?
Uh, I knew that they brought a lot of equipment in, and my expectation would be that they can repair it, whatever, and, um, I've talked.
And the reason why I'm saying that is because with our, with our, with our town work trucks, we've got, because I drive back there all the time, with the loose, the tracks, and all that kind of stuff on the bottom field, and around the lower lane, when you come off, when you come off of the trail and into the parking lot, that one area where we put stolen handles for, but that, that needs to be blacked off, that, that area right there, and it needs to be widened up for a vehicle to go through it, so that makes That, that area right there, and it needs to be wide enough for a vehicle to go through it, if that makes sense, you know what I'm talking about, you are what I'm talking about.
I mean, just tell us what's going down there, um, we, we can look at, we've got a couple of other projects that are pretty big projects that are gonna happen in the future, and we can look at, see if...
Well, I hope it's not a replacement project by our guys, because I've seen, you know, most of our work in the past, it's not just very smooth, that's pulled up for a while.
Well, um, we are hired a guy who is, um, coming off of a court of replacement search, under our public works department.
Court.
Uh, so, hopefully, our folks will be able to do that on a court of trial.
Perfect.
Uh, one of the issues with capos, they won't telephone unless they're truckload, so we have to, have to get truckloads.
Right.
I just wanna thank the recent time for the Paul, that's, to all the, they're neighbors, they're proud, they didn't just stand up, um, I know, yeah, it's a true, true thing, I mentioned, yeah, you can watch them, they've been out with those kids, and I said, if someone ever happens, I'm, I'm there right there, so, thank you to the two officers, that, that worked that, please, thank you.
Alright, and Mr. Redd?
Nothing.
Nothing at all? Alright, um, moving along into finance, were there any updates to finance other than what's in the package?
Birthday.
Alright, uh, we do have a report from the fire department, uh, in our package as well, uh, cops and red, blaming solely, any updates from, um, slingers, you know, that you may wear up?
Uh, no, the only, the, they, they, uh, collapsed, please.
Okay, alright, and, uh, I think probably, excuse me, so, I'll just turn it over to you, is there anything that, that you needed to add from the, uh, the report that started in submitted?
Yes, um, not much more, the, uh, commissions, I heard that B, this year, um, last month, we booked, um, some streets and were sending them across, and I think we ended up, uh, one hundred and ninety-one charges, but we are out there doing it, um, adding to the, several that we noticed, and then, um, our new cadets and our school exec officers, we have got radar in it, but we've got radar to work for, and when we send them to school before radar, we would have more people stopping the speed. The speed bump idea is a great one, is that part of the add cost, or is that a motive?
No, that's part of it.
The three, the three or four, that's all, I mean, that is, they do slow them down, they have overdrive, and they do work pretty well, um, that not being...
I have no idea what the cost is on that kinda stuff, I mean, I'm sure it's, uh, cheap, but...
We do, um, we don't, we, we do something every year called the government highway payment program, so we submit our, our staff, uh, to the state, and they're ready to do some things for us. Uh, speed bumps is one of the things we're starting off. Next year, um, I can look at, there's, there's no cost if we have enough things to do. So if, if I can get some of those next year, I got it in November, I talked with Chief and Captain Max, my first man, and we can try to do something like that, see how it works, before we actually put all the time that ever into that, so we, we, that's something we can try. If we can purchase some, I'll start trying to purchase some, pulling out some streets, like new street signs, that may help, but, you know, the other... Uh, I'll, I got notice from Lindsay Falls, that new hair, so I'll get, I'll, I'll get my truck down and send out the note on that, to start doing some, to reinforce in that area.
If you ever see a black F one fifty to do it, let me know, and I'll, I'll fix that really quick, okay?
Question, I, I know some people, and I'm not sure if you can tell, might get me hurt someday.
Uh, the last thing I have is in front of me, um, at our community service event, and I'm jumping a little bit in the park from there, but we live, but I just wanted you guys to have the annual one, take home what you posted, that's your job, and, um, that, they're also on our social media site, we've got a post, it's out there. But the drove take back, um, so, that's the one time on October twenty third, Saturday, tend to do, it's out on the same boat, but, and then you guys, a lot of people in town, just let them ring the girl up there, action out, we sit down in front of the food park, and it's safe up, and it's, uh, S P I, and, uh... So next one we have is the, uh, new food unit, is the silver freezer, pick up the box today, uh, Mary, we came out last year, and they switched their brand came out, and we put it on T V, so, you guys come out for that, it's been thirty minutes, or an hour, um, we'll reach out, pay for the live, and we sit out in front of the family dollar, we're donating money, some people go in and get items, and bring them out for us, some people just give us money and we go inside, but... Uh, we filled up the old freezer last year, and we had to, uh, bring another car out, so, here's how it brings up, so this year, we're gonna put that new silver rather truck we had, and I'll put that out there, and then I'll have, uh, whatever I'm driving, um, with silver. Um, the Halloween, you gotta know, we have two that is, one downtown, it starts at three, and then we have the Luddy Park trick or treat trail, that starts at, um, five to seven thirty. And what about that bottom part, we're gonna run it through the lower field, so nobody falls down in that area, it does not need to be drawn. We saw Nathan, and of course, a little, already got his plan from that, so it'll be fine. Uh, food is for cops, um, and the Christmas parade and the tree light on the third and fourth. Our shop with cop this year, um, it may be in here in this building, or we may have it in the new Town Hall, um, that's gonna be December fourteenth, from five to eight thirty. Is everybody familiar with shop with cops from last year? And, um, thanks to our cops, the news, we actually have enough to, uh, budget for that for probably the next five years, and that's a blessing. So we're gonna do ten families, and then some of these fill over, we always give up the kids at the end that are a good person, we did, uh, two or three that went to their house last year. But we're committed, we feed them, uh, we give them toys, but we also give them coats and clothes, uh, their whole family's young, they need, they need with, uh, the go bags, um, laundry. Uh, we, we bought them here last year, and it's kind of too adult for the kids, that we're doing Chick-fil-A, and I popped out. Um, the last thing we have, you're all obviously invited, I think several of the fans, you, um, the last one we have, which went really well, uh, the town cookout, that's December sixteenth, four thirty to six thirty. Uh, we'll probably have the same thing as last time, pork, chicken, and, um, uh, first thing, vegetarian burgers, whatever those things are.
Somebody, somebody had bear last time.
Uh, we did have bear out there, there's a lot of birds at, yeah, we had bear sauce, and, uh, deer, deer, people shot for, uh, but we'll have, uh, some vegetarian items as well, so you gotta all invited to that, and...
So you're saying it's been all for staff? In addition to the port and the city? Okay, alright. What time is that?
That's gonna be four thirty to six thirty for the, uh, town cookout. Tendably, it's here, tendably, we're gonna do it here, um, if that changes, maybe there's, Nathan, something about, um, Mary, that's, but tendably, it's gonna be here, and we're gonna be, uh, pulling the big cooker up in the back, and cooking all day like we did last time. So you wanna come out, play some cards, drink some Pepsi, toast, and eat good, like, Robbie, you still bringing the candy? Alright, uh, that's all I have, um...
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe, uh, maybe, this is, I'll ask you the question over the first hour, when is the tree lighting?
The third, December third is the tree lighting, and December fourth...
Okay, I thought, I don't know if you have people today, I just wondered.
And that'll still be a benchmark for me this year.
I had, uh, one item, uh, you mentioned, I'm dropping my memory, uh, at the last Yabba board meeting, one of the board members was asking about the right turn only signs there, and I was just curious, was there any thoughts of putting, like, uh, time, not time, whatever, time, uh, like, a certain segment of time, where that's enforced? Where, like, in, like, on the weekends or in the evenings, if it's not high traffic, could we allow that turn, and...
So no left turn between the...
Yeah, certainly, certain time period.
We didn't, we let it off, and we actually focused on that from twenty-three to ninety-eight minutes, and go from twenty-two citations, and then twenty-one, and one, for that, um, that was one of the other things we got some complaints on, uh, we don't, I mean, if we can, we do whatever, we take the necessary out here. Um, I think the issue is pertinent there, that, maybe we had to settle there, including the P I. didn't want to, nothing other than, um, putting up, better right about soon as I got here, but that's the issue with letting turn right.
Yeah, I understand that, I didn't know if it was, you know, no cars were around, and it's, it's safe.
Yeah, what would you recommend, like, a eight o'clock or seven o'clock?
I, I mean, I, I trust you guys, you, you, you're out there and see what happens more, I just, just wondering if it was ever, you know, thought about?
I have a person in the red commission, it's a good, a bad area, um...
So if you just, uh, red, when there's less traffic, the people drive the car down?
It does, well, Greg, but it's something we can look at, and I'll, I'll be, um, Captain Maggie, starting out with the chief, uh, he would, he would say, but I'll put it down as one of them.
Yeah, it was just, it was thought up by, um, someone who lives over there, so, I figured I'd ask a question.
Alright, anything else you, uh...
One of the guys that, that works for me was pulled by one of our officers, they, they pulled yesterday out, at that location, and he said, I've seen three accidents, say I do better, and I did it anyway, so... Everybody doesn't hate it, even though the white people, they feel it's very inconvenient, but still, it's an issue.
Mary? Any, uh, any additional questions, comments, concerns, uh, from police? Thank you. Uh, any other outside of the, uh, package from public works?
Uh, just that they're hopeful that they'll have everything up and running for the public works facility, you know, sometime next week, uh, so we'll, we're like scheduled, our, um, store, and if anybody wants to come in and check it out, we'll, we'll do all that, and we'll get, hopefully, a photo with the equipment out in front of everything. Um, I did mention that we hired a new person, um, Mike Edwards, his birthday is the twenty fifth, uh, and we have a reservation, uh, that I was thinking as designed, I don't know if you guys are aware, but he was hired, he's on, okay, but we, uh, at this last day, we'll do the twenty first.
Alright, uh, Ms. Kate Ward, the gentleman?
Um, I just wanted to let you all know that, uh, that now I'm having a policy manual, and right now, it has, um, all the policies improved personnel policies, it is a new document, and one of my upcoming projects will be to pull out the personnel policies for the group. For you, I documented the update for certifications, Nathan, um, and then keep that as a separate document, do that other operating for teachers, and try to get, so we can separate document, maybe more of a legal document, um, and have those personnel policies out in a clear separate document. Um, just, just letting you know that that's a, a, a public project, we're, we're working on it. But, may I have some other questions, or...
Alright, thank, is that anything else?
No.
There's none, alright, and Madam Ford?
Uh, nothing.
Nothing, alright, that sounds good as well, um, now is the time for close session, we have two agenda items to go into close sessions discuss, uh, first on state, uh, moving on general statutes, one forty-three, that's June nineteen eleven, eight one, uh, for them to disclose their information that is federal confidential on moving on general statutes, one fifty-eight, as one fifty-eight, and item B, moving on general statutes, one forty-three, that's thirty eighteen, eleven, eight three, console return returning orders to preserve and return client's privileges. How do you understand version one of the close session?
I think most of them are closed session.
Second, alright, we got a first and a second, need discussion before we vote?
Sorry, I, I'm really, you're, you mentioned...
Why don't we turn it back, it, it is, I'm talking that way, sorry.
Sorry.
It, I don't know what, so, I'm, I'm just not... Did you get the first and the second, did you get the order of?
I'm in top.
For those, yep. Hopefully it'll kick off in a second, we'll, we'll have it in the paper. Alright, so we got a first, any second, need discussion before we vote? Alright, Carey, not all in favor?
Aye.
And any votes? Alright, we're in now in close session.